Welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the trustee. The recent independent school district being held on October 17, 2023 beginning at 6:30pm. Madam Secretary, can we have the floor, please?
Yes, sir. Emilio Carrasco.
Here.
Ginger Frazanhan.
Here.
Victor Garza. James Mulkey.
Here.
Gilbert Zeros here. Woody Cruz as.
Here.
John Messi.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We move on to item three for your place. Mr. Toscano, we have tonight. Let's go ahead. We'll hear it from him.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mary Thomas. I'm the proud principal of Heritage Middle School for the last 11 years. Um, but I have the honor privilege of sharing with you guys a lot of amazing students. Uh, the first amazing student is Paisley File. She's going to start us off with a big prayer this evening. Do it for me.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening to thank you for many blessings and to ask for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we start this meeting. We also want to thank you for keeping the volleyball team safe, helping us to play with great sportsmanship, and for blessing us with great coaches and supportive parents. We pray that we conduct ourselves tonight in a way that is leading to you. We pray all this in your holy name, amen.
So our honor quarters want to help us lead us with the pledge of allegiance to the American flag and to the Texas flag. Please stand.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Mr. Bella, come on up. Mr. Bella is our youth choir teacher this year.
Hello, everyone, and I want to thank the board first off for having our choir here to perform for today. And I'd like to thank the whole community who's really awesome to see everybody up here for the support. Uh, for tonight, we're going to start with a national anthem for you guys. And afterwards, we will have a little treat for you with our choir song. I hope you guys enjoy it.
You may be seated. They're wanting us to sing one more song for us.
Boys and girls of every age, wouldn't you like to see something strange? Come with us and you will see this our town of Halloween. This is Halloween, this is Halloween. Rockets scream in the dead of night. This is Halloween. Everybody make a scene, trick or treat till the neighbors gonna die by. It starts now, everybody scream! In our town of Halloween.
I am the cat with the terrible face. You're the last shame gone. I am the blue wing and long blue stare. I am the wind blowing through your hair. This is Halloween, this is Halloween. Halloween, 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 Halloween. In this town we call home. Everyone hears the rocket song. In this town, don't we love it now? Everybody's waiting for the next surprise. Now that we're late, how do you trust that somebody's waiting out of bounds? Then how do you scream? It's not a dream. She's here, well, that's just fine. Say it once, say it twice, sing it just before the dice ride. With the moon in the dead of night. Everybody scream, everybody scream! In our town of Halloween. I am the cat with the terrible face. You're the last shame gone. I am the blue wing and long blue stare. I am the wind blowing through your hair. I am the shadow of the moon at night. Filling your dreams in the brim with fright. This is Halloween, this is Halloween. Halloween, 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 Halloween. When the love leads everywhere, let's not fight with thunder and scare. That's our dog. But we're not mean. In our town of Halloween. In this town, don't we love it now? Everybody's waiting for the next surprise. Melody, jam, might catch you in the back and scream like a banshee made you jump out of your skin. Halloween, everybody scream! Watch me please make way for a very special bag. Mormon Jack is king of the pumpkin patch. Try it on, dance to the pumpkin key. This is Halloween, this is Halloween. Halloween, 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 Halloween. In this town we call home. Everyone hears the rocket song. La, 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 la la la. La, la, la la la. La, la, la la la. La la la.
I hope you guys enjoyed that. We really wanted to show some things for our Halloweeners. I'm just going to put down the road pictures for girls. We have Bonnie over here. Just right here, we have Amy. Isabel. Samantha. All right, Samantha. Next Samantha is.
Sahara.
Sahara. Gabriela. Kimberly. Riley. Sophia. Amy. I got Desiree.
You said Amy for Emily.
Oh, sorry. A lot of names are remembered for my kids. And Chelsea and Valerie. I hope you guys enjoyed. Thank you so much.
All right, so girls, if you don't mind, just kind of moving on just a little bit. Because we're not done with Heritage Middle School. So this evening, we're in Texas. Picture of just all of us at the same time. Picture of you all. Yes. So, uh, for those of you who didn't know, um, our seventh grade girls volleyball team this year went undefeated this season. But not only were they undefeated, they also won first place at the SAG tournament. So, girls, we want to. And so I do want to introduce, uh, Coach Edward Rovino and Coach Julie Ann Briggs. Come on up. Um, by the way, can you put our trophy right behind, please? And show it off to everyone. This was the nice trophy. And Miss Frazanhan, Mr. Toscano, we really wanted to take a picture with them. Such a great accomplishment. It's hard to go undefeated and then even harder to win the SAG tournament as well. And so we wanted to take a picture with Mr. Toscano. So, yeah, just bring it up to the front. And, uh, Miss Frazanhan, who's also one of our parents, uh, with, uh, Miss Claude here and everyone else. And so, um, Coach, I'm going to read all the names while we're taking some pictures here. How's that? So we've got Morgan Alvarez, Emma Bratton, Eugenia Pomona, Eric Canary, Chloe Frazanhan, Kaylee Haddon, Sierra Lewis, Kai Martinez, Kieran Martinez, Kayla Massey, Kate Nones, Bella Ramirez, Etoanette Salazar, Anissa Santos, Amanda Valenzuela, and Avery West. You guys did an awesome job supporting our school.
Thank you. No, thank you, absolutely. Absolutely.
And so a couple of tokens of appreciation for our school board, by the way. Um, the wreaths, I, I did these myself. Just kidding. Just kidding. My son also contributed. Um, and the Heritage Spirit bags that each of you received, those are actually something Heritage BTA has sponsored. So, um, one last picture with our choir girls, Mr. Toscano. Uh, thank you all so much, parents, um, board members, and everyone for your, um, support. It's been a fantastic nine weeks, so thank you. Thank you, Karen.
All right, so we're going to recognize, uh, two of our amazing staff members for leading the ECWay, particularly around building, uh, relationships. So I'd like to call first up from East Central High School, Mrs. Erin Hawthorne. Come on up, Mrs. Hawthorne. So Mrs. Hawthorne exemplifies what it means to build positive relationships with students, staff, colleagues, and the greater community. She leads by example, always assuming positive intent from everyone that she interacts with. Most importantly, Mrs. Hawthorne is empathetic, humble, genuine, trustworthy, and caring. Stephen Covey once said, "Organizations move at the speed of trust." Because of the trust that Mrs. Hawthorne has earned within the ECISD community, she makes a positive difference on the programs, departments, and staff she serves. Her ability to build relationships has had a tremendous impact and brings out the best in others. Erin is the epitome of what we aspire when we say we're leading ECWay. She is powered by people, strengthened by systems, and driven by results. Let's give her one more time. First family, Lulu and Mr. Hawthorne stand to also be recognized. Thank you for sharing such an amazing. Next up, from Legacy Middle School, Mrs. Elizabeth McLean. Come on up, Mrs. McLean. Mrs. McLean naturally builds a very strong relationship with all stakeholders at Legacy Middle School. Parents love her wonderful feedback and wish there were more educators like her. She's able to work with any student, staff member, and parent and continuously has positive outcomes with every interaction. Mrs. McLean is optimistic in her approach and seeks the positive in every situation. She builds a solid rapport and cultivates a positive relationship with every person she interacts with. Mrs. McLean hosts Legacy's monthly pride awards where student, student staff, or staff members can leave positive messages with each other. Students' social, emotional health and well-being, as well as adults, are always her top priority. All the while, Mrs. McLean is also working on her master's degree in educational administration. We are incredibly grateful for her impact, and she has had it on our culture and climate at Legacy Middle School by being the strongest relationship builder and creator of space where everyone feels valued and supported. Thank you, Mrs. McLean, for all that you do. We have Karen from the family group. So she's got family, and she's got some family here. Please stand, so we can also recognize you as well. So next up, the East Central School Foundation. They have had a substantial impact on the lives of students, staff, and the greater community, uh, for many years. This group of committed volunteers continuously gives countless hours of their time, effort, and energy towards serving and giving back to the East Central community. They work many hours planning, preparing, and hosting the annual East Central School Foundation Gala, and now the Duck Drop, which raises money for teachers, for mini grants, and scholarships for students. Over the course of the history of the East Central School Foundation, they have donated over 1.5 million dollars to teachers, which has a pedigree. Let's give it up for them on that white. Their altruistic and selfless service has positively impacted thousands of students' learning experiences in the classroom and has provided financial support for students' post-secondary dreams. Last year, the foundation gave 134,251 dollars towards teachers for innovative classroom learning projects. As you will see later in this board meeting, this year, the East Central School Foundation is donating 178,357 dollars and 81 cents towards teacher mini grants and 6,000 towards summer programs. Moreover, they have approved over 1,474 dollars to the Social Services Fund to support families in need in our community. These extraordinary people are the exemplar of everything that is right and good within the East Central communities. Although they do not enjoy the attention nor do they want the spotlight, they deserve to be recognized for their positive contributions to the thousands of students and staff of the East Central ISD. Let's give it up one more time for both of them. Director Jean Lawrence. We have the Vice Secretary Pam Strosick. Secretary Shannon Albert. Treasurer Robin Massengill. We have the Second Vice President Annette Alonso. Vice President Carlos Constantino. And President Mary Beth Fiss. I believe they want to do a group photo too with everybody, so. While they're getting set up, we just want to thank you for all the difference that you make in our students, staff, and the greater East Central community. We are truly grateful. While the board is getting, uh, set up, uh, we are launching the, uh, second annual Duck Drop. So principals, we also have your large duck for you to decorate for. So before you leave, we'll give you that. And ducks are going on sale, so we live and hope for that. And last year, we raised over 5,000 dollars, am I correct? So the goal this year is to, uh, double that. That's the goal this year.
With that, we're going to take a short recess so everybody can still sit here and get home, do homework, and do all that stuff. We'll take a short break until seven o'clock.
Good evening, Superintendent Justina, Captain Massengill, and members of the board. Thank you for allowing me and at this time to speak. I come to you as a parent, an employee, and the proud rightful board member and of course, the EPLO9. I wanted to, uh, take this opportunity to see praises to a group of wonderful men and women who get up every morning not knowing what the day will bring. These wonderful individuals get to school before the sun comes up and often don't leave until the sun goes down. They too have studied classrooms one foot forward, so they understand the needs of the people and know the cost. They have sacrificed family time, family engagements, and have given up many weekends. They have made themselves available to be present for our children and to us, the parents. Many of us will never have to hold back tears and remain composed as they hear the cries of a parent who lost her child. Or wipe the tears of a student who is being bullied in school. Or have to explain to a student why mommy and daddy are divorcing. I think many times we forget that these individuals are human. They do not have superpowers, although sometimes they appear to. They cannot be every place and all the time. We need to give them grace when they don't respond in the perfect way we demand. We need to understand that they have children, grandchildren, and some who have aging parents who are in, uh, a coming of age that they need to care for. And yet somehow, day after day, they manage to keep it all together. We don't know what they're going through unless you have walked the day in their shoes. I've had the pleasure of working with one of these amazing individuals, and with others, I am blessed to call my friends. If you have not guessed who I'm speaking about, it is the outstanding East Central Independent School District Principal. Whether they hear it enough or not, y'all are doing an amazing job, and we are so blessed to have you here at East Central. At this time, I ask Ms. Coquin, if we can forward. Ms. Pinwin. Ms. Gomez. Ms. Barber. Ms. Orsak. Ms. Irvin. Ms. Barnes. Ms. Alvedier. Ms. Triana. Mr. Harvey. Ms. Kopec. And Mr. Salina. Principals, thank you so much for being here tonight. Members of the board, I want to say and thank you as well. Thank you for everything you do on a day you praise this in a small token of our appreciation.
Sparkles out, it sparkles out.
One, two, three. All right, so that's a little on to the public hearing for a thank you and celebrating destruction for high school students, Mr. Toscano. So just needs, uh, boards and faculty to help the public here. I want to call your attention to the link in your electronic packet. Uh, you're with Ed and Ray to you, Andy. Uh, this is a requirement of Education Code 202219. If you're hoping for starting with 025, 721. And what it does require is a letter of instruction for students who have not yet completed one of, you know, forcing fans of celebration. forcing events of preparation. So our approach is multi-passed. We offer a number of academic supports in the document that is linked in the agenda item in your electronic packet. You can see that they're categorized in the colors of green, orange, red, and blue. We offer class embedded strategies. We offer strategies outside the school day. We offer support within the school day. And then for some students, we even schedule additional classes to provide that support. The working part is that some students need one and sometimes a combination of options to access the support that they need. You'll also see the results of this year's cohort of students. And always keep it in mind that the number tested, those that passed represent, um, of zero. Because none of these students pass the course. And you see percentage pass rates of fifty-five to forty-seven percent of the population of students that have not yet been successful. We consider that highly successful. And then for students who still, um, have needs, we continue to provide one or more of the support indicated in the document. And then at the very end of that document, we'll see adjustments for this year. So there were four things, uh, that we included this year that's different than what we've tried or in addition to what we've tried before to support students in these circumstances. And if I could just take a second to have Dr. Fuller kind of highlight, uh, a little bit about each of those with the board. I think a couple of those in particular, particularly event to my mother and daughter to be aware of. It's one of the accelerates, it's accelerated structure of the branching line.
Good evening, Lieutenant Massio, Mr. Justina, Board Trustees. Um, yes, this year we're trying a few different things with these students. The first one is we moved the wind period to first period, um, to make sure that students start off well with, uh, with that teacher movement, get them on track, get them into the school day and start off on the right foot. Um, we also are now utilizing a program called Edventum. It is new for us this year. It is covers the core core classes, so it offers, um, reading app, social studies. Um, and what it does is it has all the lessons and everything inside it. So the teacher, the student gift card, it's an electronic platform and they engage. What we do is we utilize our screen results and we upload those so that the students are able to start off where they are rather than having to, um, go over everything, but really try to employ and individualize for that specific students on a map platform. And so that's something that we're trying this year, um, which is very, very successful. And other people who tried it, it's relatively new and so we're excited on it for our students. So, um, it also is something that teachers don't have to prep for. Because it's all internal and because we can upload our data into it to do the individualizations, then teachers do not have to write a lesson plan for it already, it's part of the program. And it's new play out, so it's a win-win for both of us. Um, yeah, y'all are really excited about that. And then one of the, uh, programs that we started last year, we're here for the branching lines. And it's a platform that is kind of multi-passed. We use it to, um, help make sure that all, uh, services that are provided to a student are all connected. And what we found is in the past, we might've had, you know, one program where a staff member would log into it. Another program, this new, another teacher would log into it, and another program. And they all would put data in for that student through multiple, they did not speak to each other, right? So we didn't get a picture of the full student and all the people that touched that student and how they were responding to those interventions unless you logged into the ECA, so those are platforms. Branching lines is a new thing. It gives the opportunity for everybody to log into one platform and log what services those students are getting. And you can see real time what's allotted and where that student is. But every service provider has an opportunity to just use one platform and put everything in depth for every student. So that's something that has been, um, very beneficial for all the staff that are helping with one student. You can see what's happening when that student comes from every channel. So that's something that we've been working on, training everybody up, and then making sure that our information is added into it. Um, and then the last thing that we're even doing is really a push for its attendance. We know that students don't learn if they're not here. And one of the things that we find, especially with the students that, um, have not had success on these real scenes, is that their confidence is really low. And so what we're really working on is making sure that they're getting relaxed, that they're getting the attention that they need. But they can take advantage of Edventum because they're here. And so, um, we started the point A challenge and then the high school has been playing, um, an incentive for students to, um, come to school. And then each week they're going to recognize those students. And they have, um, a teaching, uh, prison pop plan is what it's called. And so to try and, um, entice students and reward them for being here, so that's something that we're also adding.
All right, means that this is a public hearing, uh, would anybody like to speak on or about or to the effectiveness of accelerated instruction for high school students in the office. Well, that, we will move on to item seven, trustee reports. Update, seven point one, updates regarding ECISD district and community activities.
Um, so Friday, I was able to visit, I was invited by Mrs. Vincent, um, to her government economics, that the government was in her class. And she wanted to share with us that, um, we're doing a project right now on different, um, teams. They're studying different government styles. She had been doing cancel learning by creating spaghetti towers while using a different governor style rules. I was really obviously interested that they were all engaged and they were excited about who got the tallest. But while doing that, they were, like, the one kid was holding the books because that was their governor style, computership, um, things like that. But she, these kids were focused and everyone's like, yeah, as she did, we like, you know, talking. They were amazing. So I had the best time watching them create their towers and, uh, she measuring, she got her feet measure out and they were all excited and they didn't want it to fall, so that was fun, right? And then this week was, I got to start lunch. I signed up for every, every day. I missed a couple of schools, so I'm gonna get them next year. But Carmen was Monday, um, Angel was Friday, so I got to teach the program. That, he, I had permission by his mom to close that, but he turned it off. And I'm like, let's take a boat, because he's now, he's on our coast, uh, coaching team. Um, so he, she didn't like that issue too much, but she, they went to heritage. Um, this lady is amazing on there, she's like, they all are, but she, this lady could probably sort of lunch in her sleep. She's, they call her Rose, or, or, what's her name?
Carmen.
And then, um, Pecan Valley, look at that statue thing. I thought that was the game that I'm playing. And then I saw a girl that's good, I can't think, they're just about to go. Um, but their, uh, lines are just like so amazing and like they work like, as I said, like a well-oiled machine and they'll just get it done. And then it's like, that's all, so I, it was like.
I'm gonna be honest, I think I signed up for lunch and blew it. Uh, you know, I got caught up. But I did attend, um, several volleyball games for the girls that won the, um, first place in undefeated, uh, games. And then, um, I have of course football games. And then I did go to our, um, Tasby Convention and, um, did anybody watch that? So, um, uh, it, it was so great, but I went through the, um, where you can go through all the exhibits and stuff. And what was really exciting was I stumbled upon the art portion and there was actually East Central art there. And so I got a picture in front of some of our students' art. And then just was able to attend, uh, Dr. Fuller's class, uh, which was really cool about, um.
He stole it.
Okay, I'll stop. But there were so many other courses that we, uh, get to, to attend that is really in-depth about what's going on in education. And, um, we purposely pick things that we haven't experienced before. And a lot of school districts, uh, present things that they're experiencing or, um, things that they've implemented in their schools and how it worked and successes. So, uh, we really enjoy and appreciate the opportunity to go to those things, so thank you very much.
I did miss, uh, the delegate assembly at Tasby. I put in front of you, that's why I'm saying, I'm telling you, I gave y'all the list of priorities that's.
Oh, yeah.
And because the school board members advocating for our public education, that's what they will be trying for during lectures.
Oh, nice, thank you. And that's it for me.
Had an opportunity to go to the Tasby Convention, had an opportunity to travel. One of the trustees up there, she made sure that I was on time for everything. I didn't miss my flight, made sure that, uh, I was on the plane first. Because I have a vision for my knees, so she got a great job looking after me. Also made arrangements for us to get to the motel from the airport. I got a chance to visit with, uh, uh, Ms. Roland Justina, his administrative staff, central office staff. We, we spent a lot of time together and shared, uh, good information. And Justina felt it and got away from the job and I loved that back home. We really had a, had a great time up there. But we did go to sessions, I did, worked the sessions and learned a lot of things there. I came back and I went to a homecoming football game, I went to another football game. I had some issues climbing up, uh, those stairs and, uh, one thing you see every once you meet. It convenient for me to, uh, have a, uh, a reserved seat right on the goal line there. And I really wanted to thank that, that evidence there for, uh, taking care of that. Uh, I'm a frequent visitor over at Sinclair. Looks like everything's going over there very well. And I, I go through that once in twice a, a week and I just gotta, uh, watch how they get the kids in, how they greet the kids. I mean, they do an excellent job of welcoming and, and they're such a friendly staff that, you know, and I, I really did enjoy visiting them. And, uh, I think that's about it, yeah, thanks a lot.
So we, uh, we had an opportunity, me and my wife, we got to go and, and they had a choir performance at the high school and thoroughly enjoyed ourselves and, and the talent, it was just amazing. There was one young lady that had an angelic voice and, uh, just drew you to her and, uh, excited about what, uh, what the, the high school, uh, the potential. And, and that was, uh, just part of it. They were explaining to me, similar to the band, that the numbers are down because of COVID. And, uh, but he, he was, the, uh, Mr. Mines was talking about the, uh, the opportunities that he sees to see about two hundred students. And I think they had, I think eighty or so, and it was just amazing to hear that, I could just imagine two hundred. But, uh, awesome opportunity, uh, that me and my wife got to enjoy and the, the enthusiasm of these kids is, is just amazing. Uh, we also had the opportunity to go to Tasby, uh, and all the information that is there, it's, it's pretty neat. The first time going to this event and, uh, getting to see the, the other, uh, folks that are just as excited to learn. And then like Mr. Molk, you said, the opportunity to get to fellowship with the, uh, the staff was, was awesome opportunities. I also had the opportunity to be a delegate, the, uh, help me with it.
Dona your assembly.
No, but I was the alternate. I was the alternate. I did wear a badge that said alternate and I got more questions, what alternate to what? But I, I got to check, the chance to see, I can just observe and to see, uh, how it all worked. And to see the, what all goes into it, the amount of people, it, it was pretty neat to see. The amount of people that are advocating for our kids and for our school, um, is neat to see. And getting involved, uh, was an awesome opportunity. And so I think that's the biggest takeaway for me is just being involved and getting an opportunity to be a voice for these kids. Uh, it, it was an awesome opportunity. And we, we liked it also, the expo hall. All the giveaways you get, man, my grandson's got four little buses and all kinds of things. And I, I had the opportunity to go to, uh, the pink out as well. Had the, uh, shirt there, the real Hornets wear, wear pink and, uh, I'm pretty real. I wore pink. My daughter and wife got an opportunity to go with me and my grandsons. And of course, they, they saw Officer Rocha, Wocha, is how my youngest grandson calls him, Officer Wocha. And, uh, they had to take a picture, so we got a picture. And I, I didn't do as many days. I think I got, uh, three of the five, uh, I had an opportunity to wear that nice hairnet there and, uh. Yeah, and, and to concur with, uh, Ginger about, uh, the well-oiled machine, that, that was just amazing. With the, the elementary, I think there was six hundred, I went to Highland Forest, I believe there was six hundred and so students. And, uh, the first day I was there, I got to do all, I think it's two and a half hours or three hours, however long it was. I, I, they, they worked me out. But I'll tell you, it, it gave me a, a great perspective of how much work goes into feeding these children and how quick they do it. And how the awesome part about it was the interaction that I saw with the students and, and the pleasantness of how they treated the children. And, and you're talking, it was, uh, with some organized chaos, but it worked and it was neat to see. And the students, uh, just loving the food that they had. And I would ask everyone, do you like that? Oh, yeah, that's my favorite. So I was like, hey, I got some stuff out of there next slide. And then we, uh, had an opportunity to take my grand, uh, children to the trunker treat. And, uh, they had more candy than we knew what to do with it. So, uh, great opportunity to, to interact with folks and talking to parents and, uh, and then our officers there too. She had some pink, uh, pink boots and, uh, she was important. I almost said I'd like a pair, but that wouldn't look here as nice on me. I think that's the last slide, yeah. So that's about all I had. We had a great opportunity to just keep busy, you know, that's probably happened, we actually did. But we, we love doing it, we, we just love supporting the kids, it's about the kids.
I feel like such a snacker. Way too much fun, but I do appreciate the report on the, uh, convention because I know how much fun that is and how much we pay for that. Um, I did do one thing and I'm so sorry that I didn't get a chance to observe food. I told you much of that, but thank you, Andrea, I think you covered most. I, 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 as always, I love the Mark Holmes, uh, announcements and I know, uh, that this has been a social media, uh, responsibility week. And I especially liked the way that we presented information and shared with the community to the Sergeant General's report. And you know, some of these things I kind of know against my background, but at the same time, it's nothing like sending out a little blurb and reminding us about things that we can do to help in terms of, uh, what's going on in the social media, how that affects people. And I'm just gonna lift up this, uh, statistic on one of the slides that was presented. Eighty-five percent of kids that are age thirteen, seventeen, use social media. And, and I, as I recall, it was an average of three and a half hours, um, that, uh, it's, uh, gorgeous. Uh, forty percent of kids from eight to twelve also, um, use social media at, at the same average of, of time. And so there are other, uh, slides and other opportunities to show how even more responsible and some tips about apps, uh, that, uh. And so I think the community could really appreciate the fact that we're highlighting that in a season of work that is a lot of emotional distress, uh, a lot of mental issues, a lot of different things. But to have our Sergeant General come on and we can affirm that this is coming from a source that, uh, you know, the statistics and all that clear that out. And so I just applaud our district by having social responsibilities and, um, know the economic part and, uh, know that and, uh, help our children use their time more wisely and not get, uh, inter traps and things that will constantly, uh, issue of impression of suicidal thoughts of, of, uh, those people and, uh, how the ways to.
So, uh, I attended Tasby as well and, uh, one of the biggest, uh, guest rewards for me or biggest things that I, uh, took from Tasby this year was, uh, there was a school up in Mesquite Dallas area. I think it's Mesquite ISD, but it's called Vanguard High School. It's a new school that, uh, is actually four schools in one. It's, uh, it's a lot like the South Texas Independent School, but what makes it different than the South Texas Independent School District down in McAllen, Harmattan, in the valley, is that, uh, these are, this is four schools in one. One high school has four schools in one, whereas South Texas Independent School District has, uh, health science in a, in a separate building in a separate part of the county. And then they have their engineering, their, in their businesses. And they have their engineering, their, and their businesses, they're all separate. Whereas this school is different and they're all in one. It was a brand new school and I think one or two years old. And it wasn't by design, but they said that the parent participation in their kids' education has really excelled in this school. And just some of the schools that they have there is construction schools, construction, architectural design, construction technology, engineering, automotive collision, where they actually have art show there, annual art show there. I think they're doing a second annual now. Automotive technology, engineering, robotics, School of Health Science, firefighter, emergency tech, medical technician, pharmacy technician, medical technician, medical assistants, therapy occupation, dental assistance, School of Engineering, computer science, graphic design. So this is one school with these four branches that, and they have, still do their core, their core academics. And I was probably the biggest, uh, I guess, thing that I got from Tasby this year was just starting that one hour long session. I would just, I would love to get a chance to visit that school. Think I might set that up and go take a look at it, see what it looks like. So yeah, it would be great, great to be able to. And that's it for me. All right. We move on to seven point two, Annual Announcement of Continued Education of Board Members. All right. Y'all get ready for all this. Understate, Understate Board of Education rule completing required continuing education each year of the service is a basic obligation, an expectation of any board, sitting board member. As board president, I am required to announce the name of each member who has completed the required continuing education and has exceeded the required, required continuing education. Emilio Carrasco has not only completed but exceeded his continuing education. Del Brazil not only has completed but exceeded her continued education. Ginger Freezehan has not only completed but exceeded her continued education. James Moke has not only completed but exceeded his continued education. John Massengill has not only completed but exceeded his continued education. Monique Creases has not only completed and exceeded her continued education. And Mr. Victor Garza has not only completed but exceeded his continued education. The requirements for training are measured as of the first anniversary of the date of the trustee's election or appointment to the two-year anniversary of his or her previous training is applicable. There are eight training areas for board member continuing education. First one is local district orientation. Number two, orientation to the Texas Education Code. Number three, post legislative update to the Texas Education Code. Number four, team building. Number five, additional continuing education. Number six, evaluating student academic performance and setting goals. Number seven, identifying and reporting abuse, trafficking, and other maltreatment of children. Number eight, school safety. To this, to the extent applicable to the board member, I will announce the completion efficiency as to required training. For members who still have time remaining to complete required training, I will announce those board members who have scheduled the time of training and those who have not yet scheduled the training. Luckily, we don't have to do any of that. At the conclusion of this announcement, I will announce any board member training in excess of the continuing education requirements. All eight training areas mentioned before me have completed to applicable. Ginger Freezehan, Monique Creases, John Massengill, Victor Garza, James Moke, Emilio Carrasco, Del Brazil. There are no board members that are inefficient or require more time to complete the required training. The following board members have exceeded the required amount of continuing education training. Ginger Freezehan, Monique Creases, John Massengill, Victor Garza, James Moke, Emilio Carrasco, and Del Brazil. That includes that. We are done. All right. We will move on to Item A, Superintendent's Report, eight point one, Personnel Report. Mr. Triscotto.
Trustees, this much reports in your package. So in case if you'd like any additional information, please let me know. If you have any other questions.
We move on to item eight point three, Bond Construction, that's Mr. Triscotto.
Turn it over to John and Steve, provide the word with the latest regarding the bond construction.
Good evening, Mr. Massengill, Mr. Triscotto, board members. Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to bring you in today. Tonight, our topic is going to be the new middle school. Um, we've done a lot of work together with our partners, Doors Construction and NLPA Architects, and we could ask you to do a brief overview.
So what you'll see here on this first slide is just kind of the site itself, the new middle school in relation to Tradition Elementary School. You'll see that line that's drawn on here. That's our first project. We're looking to get underway with this road construction project in December. The purpose for this is to get the traffic that's going to be used for construction away from the school. So that we don't inhibit any of that traffic flow there around St. Hedwig in general. Once we get that done, we're gonna turn that into the main lane that's gonna come into the campus. You'll see there that it kind of deviates and moves. There's a century oak tree that we're gonna be working around out there. And we have hired an arborist who's gonna be on staff to help us work through that to make sure we don't have.
Again, the emphasis here again with the, with the road is we want to be as least disruptive to tradition as construction is going on. They're still maintaining everything. And we don't want them to have to change any of their patterns for parking, for parent pickup, for stacking, for teacher drop off, for parent drop off, any of that. So this is gonna help us do that. This is the layout on the actual site. Uh, we'll get into, in a few slides, you'll see the actual buildings. But we wanted you to see how the entire school, the athletic fields, the route of traffic is going to sit on the site.
So if you look at the bottom where it's coming in from fifteen eighteen, the parent pickup is gonna wrap around. That's okay. To the top, it's gonna, so that we have plenty of viewing space and we don't back up into fifteen eighteen itself. It's gonna wrap around that building and come to the back end of the building and then come back out that same loop. You'll see a small loop in the front. That is the bus pickup area right there. And then you'll see the campus to the left of it, kind of a U shape with a courtyard in it. The football field is now oriented. We made some changes to that so someone's facing true north in that end zone so that we can get the maximum use of the space as well. We looked at using the athletic fields around it. And the tennis court's down this, yes, right there.
On the next slide, you'll see a little bit different variation of this slide. But we wanted to emphasize and show that we are really taking into account the safety and the security of the campus. Here's all the different types of security measures we are building into the plan for gating, fencing, monitoring through the property. You'll see we've got all different types of structures to secure this perimeter, outside perimeter, the main outside perimeter with a fencing closer to the school, a nonscalable security fence, um, gates for access during certain amount, certain times of the day that will restrict traffic flow all time so that we are working diligently to make sure that the campus is secure. Keeping in mind that all the things we've learned working with Mr. McKay and all the safety and security that we've had to upgrade at other campuses, this one has come with it already included. We're working on that diligently. So here you see the actual layout. Um, this has taken months and months of collaboration with the NLPA indoors and our community. We've had sessions with students, sessions with teachers at both campuses, legacy and heritage. We've talked to our departments, major departments that will have an impact on this campus. We've sent out surveys for major departments, seen this input on the layout. And this is where we are at this time. You'll see here on the first floor, the red area here is the administrative wing. And it's on the first floor. The main entry is right here for the campus. Oops. Very sensitive. I'm so sorry. The light blue, it's very touchy. The light blue over here is our special needs wing on the first floor. While right across from the administrative building, you'll see here at the heart of the campus, the library. First floor here, the purple, this is our athletic wing and our weight room. There's the journalism classrooms here. On the other side of the building, you have your seventh grade academic wing on the bottom floor. And then up here, the pink, you'll see performing layer. That's, thank you, Performing Arts, thank you. And then in the purple, you'll see your cafeteria, theater arts area. That's the first floor. Second floor, above the academic wing, you'll see your elective wings, art classes, CTE classes, followed by the sixth grade on top, kind of separated from the seventh and eighth grade, and that's intentional. We got surveys that it's best, or we, our parents prefer, kind of to keep the sixth grade on their own side of the building. So there's interaction, but not, when not necessary. They have a little more time to get a little more mature before they, we expose them to the big seventh and eighth graders. And on the other side of the building, the upstairs, is the eighth grade.
So similar in square footage and rooms that facilitate to our current.
This is where you're gonna put the football field?
Yes.
Those tennis courts, what is that to the left of the tennis court?
Right here, this is our bus drop off.
What is that?
The bus drop off and pickup?
Bus drop off and pickup?
Yes, sir. As well as there is some parking in there for after hour activity as well as staff would like to park there.
Where is the entrance to the football field?
So you're gonna have one just to, I can't say north, but it's not. Just to the top of that. And then from the other side of this building, see where that other large parking lot is?
Yes.
There's entrance that's over there as well.
Over there.
And the concession stand is just right where the mark is, right there.
Outside concession stands in that place.
Where is it, Jimmy?
It's that large building right there.
Right there.
Yes, sir.
What is that to the left of that, that green square?
This is.
What is that, don't worry.
This is the courtyard. It's the hub of the campus. Um, so you'll see that the courtyard, an outside area which is exposed from the library and cafeteria through windows is kind of centered. When we got feedback from the campus teachers and students, they wanted an outside area where they could, um, to use their words, order to chill and just relax, you know, in the morning. Uh, we're not sure how the administration will utilize this area, but it's gonna be beautiful.
Yeah, I appreciate it. And that, except the entrance on that, go through and you come back to stay. So that's gonna be two lengths.
Yes, sir.
Correct.
That's coming off of fifteen.
I have a quick question. So right where the bus turnaround is, is the mid three, is around that square? Is that parking? Or what is that?
You mean over here?
No, right straight down, uh, here. No. Where the bus turned around is that empty space where?
That.
That is, that's actually the current bus stop.
That's the bus. That's the bus parking lot. And that's based to, the tradition is right on the other side of that.
So where, let's say we go to a football game, where's all the parking?
You can have quite a bit up there as well as down there where that bus.
How many?
Uh, we've got more than we have in either of our other school.
You'll notice more over here. And here, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. President, we've got over 200 parking lots.
Thank you.
And you'll notice the, the, this right here, the field and the courtyard right now, as we understand, will be turned.
Synthetic.
Okay, we try to see it.
So here's some renderings right here. If you look at that top right one, if you will. From an architectural standpoint, we want to tie in and make it complementary to Tradition Elementary Schools. So kind of some of the things that were chosen for this school were made to complement that other facility that we have on the same side, right? So we didn't want it to stick out. The bottom left, it shows a picture of an entry. You'll see a lot of glass there. One of the things that came back in the surveys was they liked a lot of natural lighting. But we're also taking into account some of that ballistic material that we're gonna put at the seventh grade high level across the front of that school. So we've taken into account the same. The center section right, what's that?
The courtyard, the libraries.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah. So that's kind of a learning stair, kind of what they have at the high school. Coming down off of that two-story section. And then the bus drop off, so the bus drop off, the pickup and the student pickup, drop off, both have covered areas so that we can have this covered for the students coming along.
Okay, so we don't have a lot of photos yet of the gap inside. But these are two good projections. Uh, what we have here is the library and the millwork. Uh, the shading may be a little bit different. But this is the actual shape of the area that's going to be created for the library. Uh, you can see here, if the glare allows you, some of the windows that will face the courtyard to look out in some of the areas of the library. And then in each learning wing, we have created a collab space, which is kind of an area in each learning wing where the teachers can have small groups, they can have sessions, they can have kids go out and do independent learning. Um, this is, this will be the shape of them with the lighting and the features that we have selected for this area. It's not necessarily the same furniture that had yet to be established or returning. But this will give you an idea of what the inside could look like in the collab space. Yeah. So we've been working diligently, still nothing is final, but we're getting close. But we wanted to raise to you to see if you had any questions or offering suggestions.
We're looking to begin construction.
On the football field, is it lit? Or is there like a wire for lighting later on?
The intention right now, sir, is to lay the wiring so that all the infrastructure is there without impacting.
That's good.
Yeah, thank you all so much.
Appreciate it.
All right. Move on to eight point three, Vailino E S L Department to report this representation to the department and the waiters.
Yeah, I'll call the department. I'm pleased to blow you this time, given your electronic faculty has to be slide that you're presenting tonight. Oh, now they, um, summary of course.
Thank you for listening, I say designated superintendent, Mr. Poston, for members and colleagues. Thank you for allowing us this opportunity to meet state requirements by presenting our program stats. We, the Vailino Department, are a department of three, director, coordinator, and instruction specialist. And we work, we work under the supervision of our chief instructional officer, Dr. Pule. So with that said, our department has two major responsibilities. One is to support instruction. These are the programs that we offer here in East Central. We have our Vailino program for two hundred academies, which approximate numbers are eight hundred ninety-three students enrolled. We have our ESL program that we have at every school here in the district, and approximate number eight hundred forty-six students. We have our Lloyd program, which is offered at the two middle schools and the two high schools. Approximate number is two thousand one hundred ninety-three. So in total, our program serves about three thousand nine hundred thirty-two students. Why do we offer these programs? Because we have a very diverse population. And to the right is a chart of the different languages that we service here at East Central. We have approximately forty, more than forty languages. Because you'll notice, um, other have eight. That means that those are dialects of other languages. So it's not only one language. We have about eight different dialects of different languages. So with that said, our next responsibility is compliance. When we talk about compliance, we have a process for our students entering East Central. We have to identify them for services. We monitor their English language development growth through CHLPASS, state assessment. We read class. growth through CHALPASS, state assessment, we reclassify students when they are ready, and then we monitor them for at least two years to make sure that they continue to be successful. One of our other responsibilities is our staff, our teachers and our instructional assistants. The state requires that we report two things. The first part is the application status of teachers that are not fully certified. And then the second part is that for those teachers that are not certified, what do we offer as a district to support and guide them in instruction in our classes? So for that, we have an alternative language program. And that little visual that you see are the three strategies that we have identified here at East Central that are proven and have a lot of research to help our teachers, help our students be successful, which are language objectives, identifying the language needs, preview, view, and review, or the strategy of those students that need to be set up for success, and then our structuring conversations, which allows your students to listen, speak, read, and write the language. Two new things that the state is requiring from us this year, one is that we report our instructional assistance, support, and work. So now they are asking for the instructional assistance, what are they doing, how are they supporting the emerging by labels? A second thing that is new this year, we've always reported our recruiting opportunities for teachers, but this year it will have to be approved and signed by our human resources director. So the state asks how many opportunities, where are you recruiting teachers, what are you doing to be able to have teachers that are certified appropriately to be within East Central students? I also want to add that our emerging by labels, approximate number right now, identified are 1,500. We have 77 students that are denials, but we are also responsible for them. Some of our students are dual-identified, that means that they're emerging by labels, but yet they're gifted and talented. So we have approximate 91, we have students that are emerging by labels in special education services, 164, students that are migrants, 18, and one of our biggest member and really our concern are our long-term emerging by labels. And I'll talk to you a little bit more about what that means, long-term emerging by labels in our other slides. I also want to call to your attention the identification piece. So we've established here at East Central a test fee department, which is in our offices. Last year, at the end of the year, we identified 150 students. This year, we're two and a half months into the year, and we've already identified 171 students. So that's just something to consider. We also work very closely with our student performance, obviously, and our students are measured through CHALPASS, Texas English Language Proficiency Assessment Scale, which basically measures the growth of English development for our student population. You have here on this graph, students that have net growth and then those that are not being growth, so this is another concern that we have. Remember, I talked to you about long-term emerging by labels? These students have to need growth, and then on that chart, which is very tiny for you to see, it's all of the criteria that the students have to meet to be able to reclassify and say they will no longer have the label per se of emerging by labels. Those are the ones that we continue to monitor for two years. So that, this is an area of concern that we have and we are working with. This year, we only have 10 students who will be classified, and that's because there's several assessments, you'll see there on the chart, that the students have to present, including STAR, including CHALPASS, including work teacher observation, for them to be able to reclassify. And by the way, when we talk about CHALPASS, the students' language proficiency is measured in four domains, in listening, and speaking, and reading, and writing. Students need to show their proficiency in all four domains, so it's, it's something very difficult for them to do. We're working very closely with middle schools, because you'll notice that the students that reclassified were in elementary and high school. So this is an area of concern that we are going to be working with very closely. This is the information in reference to our teachers, this is what we also have to submit. So the state requires for us to say, how many teachers are publicly certified? In this case, for example, in bilingual, we have three teachers that are not publicly certified, which the state refers to as an exception, we have to write an exception. But we have 44 that are, so we have to be proud of them. In ESL programs, we have 21 teachers that are on waivers, but we have 121 that are ESL certified. So this is important information for us to consider. One of the things that I also want to add is that this year, we were probably the only district in San Antonio that started our programs in bilingual dual-language with all of our positions filled, so thank you to our amazing peers. All other districts began the year with vacancies in their dual-language programs, every district. We were the only one that started, perfect. With that said, what do we do to provide district support? So for our teachers, we are required to provide professional development. By the end of the year, we will have provided 16 opportunities for our teachers to come to our trainees. Today, we have already done seven, and 165 teachers have attended, and you have that visual right there. We also support our teachers with their certification, so we have a plan in which we provide training for them, we refer them to where they can access training, either through the state, through region 20, and then we also help them with reimbursement. So once they successfully pass the test and become certified, we reimburse the cost. For our instructional assistance, we've been working very closely with them, they have a very clear expectation of their roles and responsibilities. We provide training for them in second language acquisition, technology, and resources for English language development, and reading and writing. So I can leave without sharing our fun stuff, student and community success. We are very proud to state, by the way, this is not required, this is something that East Central has chosen to do for their students and their community. We offer an opportunity for our dual-language students at the elementary level to obtain high school credit, high school Spanish credit. And we started doing this three years ago, we started with seven students obtaining that credit. The five, last year, we had seven, and then we went to 14, this year, we have 29 students. So 29 students at our elementary level already have a high school credit, a LOE, and those are the requirements, so it's not something that we just decide. We are very clear and transparent to our families and our communities of the requirements that it takes to obtain this LOE credit. So big celebration for our community. Something else that we're also very proud of is our region 20 study. We always place, East Central every year places, whether first or second, whether elementary, middle school, and high school, and these are the students that are represented at this year. And I also want to reiterate that this competition is de Rio, Uvalde, all of the districts of San Antonio, so it's not something simple, it's something to be very proud of, of our kiddos. And then another thing that we want to celebrate is our family, parent, family, and community engagement, so this gives you an idea of what we've been doing to support our community. We are offering adult ESL classes. Last year, we, 2021, we ended the year with 30 participants, 22, 30, this year, mid-year, we're already at 25. So past semester, we're sure we're gonna exceed that number of what we've had in the past. We also offer paraprofessional courses, and those are the numbers of people that have participated, most of them are parents, their parents are our own students in our, in our community. Right now, we have 10 that will complete the course for paraprofessionals by East Central, so we're very happy of that. GED is something new that we started this year, and we already have 23 participants, and we're offering GED opportunities in both Spanish and English, and those are the numbers for you. These parents, same parents that are trained as paraprofessionals are also taking an opportunity and working as substitutes when there's not a paraprofessional, I'll vacancy. So we have one, we have three, the quality here, and this year, we have 10, we're verified, and this is really helping our, our struggles with substitutes at our dual-language campuses, so we're very proud and happy of that. Another thing that we do is that we work very closely with CTMR, Career College and Readiness, and these are the opportunities that we offer our students and our parents to participate in, very, very successful participation. And that is my presentation on behalf of all of our students' languages, thank you, gracias, and then I can't read the rest.
Oh, there's no person right there.
All right, we move on to eight point five, revision of board policy local, Mr. Scott.
So trustees, this is this year's CBAS report, Community Based Accountability Systems Report. It's in your electronic packet, under the agenda item, if you click the link. It'll take you to the report, which is a 36-page document, which I think is getting better every year. And again, this report includes the degree to which the district has made progress in the areas of student learning in progress, which represents pillar one, engaged and well-rounded students, pillar two, quality and commitment of staff, pillar three, student safety and well-being, and pillar four, post-secondary readiness, and pillar five, community engagement and partnerships, and pillar six, institutional and operational systems, and pillar seven. And just again, by way of reminder, this is our effort to have a more complete accounting of everything that the school district is accountable for in the public, in addition to student learning and state accountability. And so this coupled with state accountability, we believe is a more complete accounting representation of the things we're, we're doing well, and the areas that we have opportunities to improve upon. So we wanted to present this to you tonight for your review, and in the upcoming week, if you have any feedback, please send that my way. Our intentions are at the end of next week to get this mailed out to the community. This is something that in the past, we've made available at campuses for parents, for staff, but we've not sent it out to the entire community, and going forward, we feel that it's more beneficial to make sure that all in the community have this information, so once you guys had a chance to take a look at it this week, give me feedback, and we'll make any adjustments based on that feedback when we get it out. May I be answering questions?
So the whole, every six pages of central?
Yes, ma'am.
Looks great, looks great.
All right, no questions, we'll move on to now, eight point five, revision of board policy local, Mr. Scott.
Trustees, you can go to the link of the policy in your electronic packet. You certainly heard a lot about this in the last month regarding corporal punishment. This policy existed in most school districts' policy manual, particularly the segment around corporal punishment. Corporal punishment refers to paddling, spanking, or other physical force which is used as a means for violation, for discipline, or correction, or violations of student code conduct. This is not something that in East Central ASD has been utilized for the better part of the last three decades, and so the recommendation that we're bringing for your consideration or review this month is striking out the language, allowing it, and including the language from the board that specifically states the board prohibits use of corporal punishment in the district, students should not be spanked, paddled, or subjected to other physical force as a means of discipline for violations of student code conduct. So it's striking out that it can be administered and rewritten, that the board prohibits that for disciplinary purposes. And that is also echoing the advice of the community. And so this is for review for you this month, if you have any questions, send them my way, and we'll get those questions answered, and we'll bring this back to you next month for your consideration, possible approval.
All right, we'll move on to eight point six, revision of board policy EEC local, Mr. Scott.
Again, EEC local is attached for you there as well. EEC local speaks to compensation benefits, specifically leave and absences of employees. The segment that we are bringing for your review this month with consideration of amendments is this first section that refers to mental health leave of peace officers. In the event that a peace officer experiences a traumatic event in the line of duty, they shall be granted a maximum of nine days for mental health leave per traumatic event, so we're not asking to change that. Our language in the current policy refers to peace officer, and we also have among our law enforcement team, the dispatcher, that he's not a peace officer. And we want to change the language from peace officer to an eligible employee, as we know the dispatchers in the line of duty could also experience traumatic events, since we wanted to ensure that dispatchmen are eligible as well, based on the language. Further into the policy, it speaks about line of duty illness, which could also necessitate a leave of absence for an officer. And so this language is just clarifying that it should an officer take a leave of absence due to a line of duty illness or injury, that once that leave of absence is complete, the district shall have a statute extended. And so it's just clarifying language in the existing policy in those two things. So if you have any questions over the next month, send them my way again, we'll be sure to answer those, and we will be bringing this policy back for your consideration and possible approval next month as well.
All right, anybody have any questions? We'll move on to eight point seven, upcoming events.
Trustees, in your October and November calendar, the survey voting will be in the boardroom from October 23rd to November 3rd, as well as several district activities going on to keep you very busy in November. Couple of things that I wanted to point out, student and staff holiday on November 10th, also your next regularly scheduled meeting is November 14th, which is also a Tuesday. And then the Thanksgiving holiday, district will be closed the week of the 20th, and there's also a student holiday on the 27th. So if you have any questions, depending on the activity in October, November calendar.
How many is that November calendar, this is October?
On the back.
On the back of your, on the back of the, there you go, is that right there?
Yeah. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody have any questions on the calendar, or? No? All right, we'll move on to item nine, action agenda items nine point one, consent for class size exemption waiver, Mr. Scott.
Trustees, per education code TEC 25.112, honor after October 2nd, we passed. If we have any classrooms in grades kindergarten through fourth grade that exceed 22 students, which is the limit, the district has 30 days to submit a class size exemption, which is what we're bringing to the board tonight. Attached in your electronic packet, you'll see a table that lists the campuses, Harmony, Con Valley, Salado, Sinclair, and Tradition that serve students in kindergarten through fourth grade, and you'll see per grade level, the number of classes for which we are submitting a waiver, meaning that those classrooms have more than 22 students. The reason for that is growth over the long run, and so you'll see the total across the district, in K 34, are 30 classrooms that exceed the 22-1 limit. Last year, we submitted 17 voters, so our role continues to grow. So our role continues to grow pretty rapidly, and it's necessitating us to submit waivers due to the lack of classroom space, staffing challenges in some instances, and in some instances, we're in that particular grade level, while we may have a couple of classes over twenty-two, there's not enough students to open up an additional section to justify another teaching. And this is not a good time of year to try and find qualified teachers. So after a lot of effort to mitigate, this is our best that we can present for waivers at this time of year under the circumstances. And so if you're going tonight, we will be sending this forward to the agency, and that is the extent of the plan. So it's not a question of whether it can be approved, you just have to notify the agency where the classrooms are, and how many there are now in your, in your school district, which is what's presented for your consideration. If you have any questions.
So when you send the waiver in, how many students can you put in a classroom?
So you can exceed twenty-two, and there's no limit, but we don't have room for more than about twenty-six, twenty-five. Most of our classrooms will have twenty-three to twenty-five, K through four.
You can.
So it's two or three kids more than.
Four is more than okay.
You're not in the majority of cases.
Not going to push.
No, sir. Fifth grade is a little bit of a different story in the elementary level. It's not governed by the twenty-two limit, so there are some examples, particularly in a tradition, maybe we've got more than twenty-five, twenty-seven, maybe. So those questions are a little more like a junior high-sized classroom, which is unfortunate at this time.
Any questions? No? All right, we're good.
All right, Mr. President, I recommend board approval of the application for the class-size waiver exemption as presented.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve the application for class-size exemption. Do I have a motion?
No.
Have a motion from Tony Criesis, have a second from Ginger Frieson, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to nine point two. East Central School Foundation, Lee Moore Smith Teacher Mini Grants and Summer Program Donation, Mr. Scott.
Mr. President, as Mr. McKay indicated earlier, we're recognizing the foundation board. The foundation has awarded, intends to donate fourteen persons, teacher mini-grants one hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars, three hundred sixty, one hundred seventy-eight thousand, three hundred sixty-seven dollars, and eighty cents, as well as an additional six thousand dollars for summer programs. So this necessitates four. Is there any answer to the questions?
Any other questions, comments?
All right, Mr. President, I recommend board approval of the East Central School Foundation award for teacher mini-grants and summer programs.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve the East Central School Foundation award, teacher mini-grants, and summer programs. Do I have a motion?
No.
Have a motion from Mr. Jamie Mulkey, do I have a second? Have a second from Tony Criesis? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, we'll move on to nine point three, Hope Cat San Antonio donations, Mr. Scott.
Sir, trustees, another donation, this one comes from Hope Cat Villar, because it is five thousand dollars for board, board policy, board also needs to accept the donation. In this particular case, the donation is being provided for Con Valley Elementary for our new student academy. The new student academy, the fourth team, will have the opportunity to decide how the funds will be utilized for the benefit of our students who will be served in this student academy program. Giving donations, five thousand dollars from Hope Cat.
So for general, for Hope Cat, we appreciate that, all in agreement that they're doing to, for the Con Valley Elementary programs.
Mr. President, I recommend board approval of five thousand dollar donation from Hope Cat San Antonio, as presented.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve five thousand dollar donation from Hope Cat San Antonio. Do I have a motion?
No.
Have a motion from Emilio Carrasco, do I have a second? Have a second from Ginger Friesenhahn? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Nine point four, construction administration services work related to outdoor learning space at Con Valley Elementary School, Mr. Scott.
Trustees, this is a continuation of our outdoor learning spaces for Amelia's女儿, supported, funded by grant dollars, pre-K essay. We rounded out the completed, we've been utilized, the outdoor learning spaces at St. Clair, Harmony, and Salado, and now we're moving to Con Valley. So we're in need of a general contractor to provide construction administrative service, services for the work related to the outdoor learning spaces at Con Valley. The district has utilized Amstar Incorporated for other outdoor learning spaces to provide construction administration services, and that's what we're recommending for this project as well. And I just wanted to point out, the board had previously approved Bider Wells Park, designed as the architect for his Con Valley Elementary School outdoor learning project, and that's the same group that has done the architect design for the other projects, and worked with the construction administrative services, Con Valley, and some of the other projects, and so it goes in with well. We're satisfied with the quality and all that goes with construction administration program services. Any other questions?
No.
Mr. President, I recommend board approval of Amstar Incorporated's general contractor for Con Valley Elementary, outdoor learning project.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent, Mr. Scott, to approve Amstar Incorporated's general contractor for Con Valley Elementary School outdoor learning project. Do I have a motion? Have a motion from Emilio Carrasco, do I have a second? Have a second from Ginger Friesenhahn? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, nine point five, discussion and action on naming the new elementary school, Mr. Scott.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. About a month ago, board policy, the board assembled a committee chaired by trustee to present, and we asked representative from the committee, I represented it from the committee, but it didn't work, and they didn't make it through tonight. So, welcome.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Scott, friends and guests, and board trustees. My name is Melissa Thomas, and I'm honored to be a part of the naming of this school. My children, Lauren London and Layla, were here, proud of East Central High School and Tradition Elementary. The naming committee met on September seventh at about five-thirty at Tradition Elementary School. There were seven committee members, parents, students, and a few children present as well, and staff who participated in this interactive process. The naming committee did not take collecting the names lightly, and we took a fall of two hours to reach our final recommendations, and it was very engaging. We began first by brainstorming as many of the names as possible, and then went through three more phases to narrow it down to the three schools for each that we're going to present to you this evening, three for the elementary and three for the middle school. It was a very positive experience, and one that all of us enjoyed taking part of. I myself, as a new East Central parent, am very excited to be a part of it, so thank you for the opportunity. So without further ado, if I can present to you the new elementary school for School North, in no particular order, Raytown Elementary School, Frontier Elementary School, and Honor Elementary School.
So trustees, we have three names in no particular order, Raytown, Frontier, and Honor. So do I have a motion for any one of those three names to?
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that we select Honor for the new elementary school.
I have a motion to name the new elementary school, North, to honor Elementary School. Do I have a second? Have a second from Ginger Friesenhahn? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, we'll move on to the next one, which is nine point six, discussion and action on naming the new middle school.
All right. In no particular order. First elementary, middle school, Middle School North name, St. Edward Middle School, Fowler Middle School is the second, and then the last is Generation Middle School.
You said Generation?
Generation, yes.
Not plural, just Generation.
Just Generation. Go ahead.
All right, trustees, we have three names presented to us in no particular order, St. Edward, Fowler, and Generation. Do I have a motion for the naming of the new middle school?
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion for a motion naming of the new Middle School. Fowler.
We have a motion from Ginger Friesenhahn to name the new middle school, Fowler. Do I have a second? Have a second from Emilio Carrasco? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations to the already. Now we put names on, and now we own.
That's me. Yeah. Very.
All right, we're, Mr. Tony Criesis, we'd like to pull item eight point two, low-attendance days waiver, Mr. Scott.
Trustees, attached to that particular item is a request to the agency for a waiver. This waiver is being available to districts with events, it could be weather events, it could be community illness, it could be flooding events that cause attendance to be interrupted such that on the same day the previous year, the difference is ten percent or more. And after the events that transpired in the district a couple of weeks ago regarding the hoax calls, we experienced three events, three days. On September twenty-sixth and twenty-eighth, East Central High School's attendance was more than ten percent down from the same day the previous year. On September twenty-eighth, Cassidy High School's attendance was down almost twenty percent from the same day the previous year. So for those three days, the board can approve to submit a waiver, and essentially, if approved, those three low grades, if you will, would be removed from averaging the average day of attendance. At snapshot date, we take all of our days of school we attended, the average day of attendance gets collected, and that's how our foundation school program funding is determined. And so these low-attendance days would have a net significant impact on our funding. Should this waiver be approved, much less if we don't see that. So that's what we're bringing to this, for your consideration. If you have any other questions.
I think this is a little, let me have a, have a review.
I, I don't think there's a limit, correct me if I'm wrong, too, but I think that as long as there are days with more than ten percent difference from the previous year, you can submit a waiver for any one of them.
Whether this.
So the first day, first two days were the twenty-eighth, twenty-sixth, and twenty-eighth, East Central High School. The twenty-eighth was also a day for Cassidy where the attendance was more than ten percent down.
What time did this hoax call come in?
What time? It was that Monday about nine oh four in the morning.
Attendance hadn't been taken.
Attendance had not been taken. Attendance that was affected were substitute kids.
So it's not necessarily the day that's in the week.
Okay, that's what you.
Yes, the affected attendance for the rest of the week.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, I recommend board approval of the low-attendance day waiver as presented.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve low-attendance day application. Do I have a motion? Have a motion from Jamie Mulkey, have a second from Tony Criesis, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to item eleven, adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Huh? Okay, all right. No, I did not. So let's go back and approve. I have a motion to approve the content agenda as presented. Do I have a second? Second from Jamie Mulkey, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. We're going to adjournment, do I have a motion for adjournment? We are adjourned.